Good. Everybody able to log in? Okay. Great. Well, welcome everyone to the city council meeting of Manzanita on July 9th. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. It's lovely to see everyone. I'm sure those of you who are here, who have been here in the past, realize that we don't have us this nice looking gentleman lineup in uniform here every night, but we will let you know what that is about when we get to it on the agenda. Have to wait a little bit for the reveal on that, but it will be very nice, I promise you. So we've got our usual mix of items on the agenda tonight. And as we always do, after calling the meeting to order, I'm going to ask Nancy if anyone has signed up here to make any kind of comment prior to the meeting?
No.
No?
One has signed up.
Do we have anybody online who would like to make a comment that's not on the agenda tonight?
No hands.
I'll give it the usual extra half a beat just in case. Okay, so we'll move on. Our next item as always is to go through the consent agenda. For those of you who aren't familiar with that, that is when we basically adopt the minutes from all of the last several meetings, anything we've had since the last council meeting, plus the bills. So tonight that would include the budget hearing on May 28th, 2025. That was the meeting where we finalized in a special meeting we do once a year, the city's budget for the next fiscal year. We also have the June 4 regular session. I don't know about other counselors, but June 4 seems about six months ago to me now rather than just one month, but we did do it and there's proof via the minutes. And it also includes the work that was done in our June 11 work session. And then we also have approval of bills. So I'll do as I always do, which is ask counselors if there is any item that needs to be separated out and discussed from that before I ask for a motion.
No.
No? Oh, good. So can I have a motion please to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, great. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good. I should mention at this point, Councilor Hart has excused for this meeting. So for those of you wondering about the gap there to the right of Jerry, he can only has to look this way tonight and not some that way, which is kind of awkward sometimes with our seating here. But so we wish Brad best and we will see him next month. So the next item up is the city managers' reports. Layla, would you like to speak for that please?
Brief tonight. Just want to mention that we're in the process of rescheduling Planning Commission to the 21st of the month. We needed a little more time to work on the ordinance amendments and prepare in a good way to have a productive conversation. So expect to see that notice go out and that meeting time changed. Court is Friday. The last time it would be held at the Nahaln Bay Fire District. And so I think you're probably going to cover this a little bit when we talk about Pine Grove. And express our gratitude for the fire district who have let us basically couch serve for the last four years. So it's a big deal.
Yes.
And then we have completed our move into City Hall. So we're 100% operating out of City Hall over the last two or three weeks, working out the kinks, which there are plenty, but we're getting really close. If you want to give a shout out to Doc, who has had a very big lift over the last couple of weeks and has done a great job and we have a few more weeks of work to do, but we'll be ready and set to open on August 2nd, which is when we will have our grand opening and that will start at 11 o'clock and we'll be sending out a save the date for that soon. Very exciting times.
Can you move your water bottle?
My water bottle?
You don't like it?
Yeah. That's all I got.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Eric Harth, our police chief. Eric's going to talk through the fourth as we always do, first council meeting following the 4th of July. Just give his perspective on the weekend and how it went. And then I think he's got some other business as well, so please go ahead.
I'll start with the second part. Just want to congratulate Max Humpherson. He's our fifth officer for Manzanita now. So Max is still doing code enforcement activities, but now he's going to be full police authority. He attends the police academy, he starts July 28th and will graduate in November. And then he'll do field training with the other officers for probably two to three months after that. So next spring he'll be on his own patrolling. In the meantime, while he's, while Max's at the academy, the code duties are going to be shared by the officers that are on duty. So we'll be actively checking the code enforcement email that's established. And then any messages that go to the code enforcement telephone will be forwarded from Max to the officer that's working. So we'll still be checking the code phone and email and following up on any complaints and just picking up his duties while he's gone.
Anything to say, Max?
I look forward to coming back to the gag.
We're counting on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
And then to 4th of July. I think the parade was probably compared to the last few years had more people observing. It seemed like it was, as I went down the Lanita, it was pretty thick with people like it used to be in years past. I definitely want to thank the CERT team and all the other volunteers that were able to help with traffic control and the candy away from the vehicles. This is, I think, the second or third year in a row that the police department hasn't had to do the traffic control during the parade, which has saved us a ton because we used to have to have everybody in in the morning and all the way through till after midnight, 1 o'clock. Now we're able to stagger some shifts and the night guys can come in at a later time. So that's been a huge help and it's been working great. I had nothing to do with the traffic this year and I didn't see any problems or hear any problems. So there was a good job done. Fireworks. There was leading up to the 4th of July, from John, who was working those nights, two nights before, he didn't observe any illegal fireworks. He knows of two that went off the 3rd, the night before. And then on the 4th, none of the officers observed any illegal fireworks in town, in the actual city limits of town. And they were able to finally go down on the beach and write a few citations that evening after they made sure that nothing was happening in town. But it sounds like from past years, there is a big improvement. Obviously, there's still work to be done to stop all fireworks. With that being said, I did contact Cannon Beach Chief today and talked to him about what they kind of do. And John also reached out to one of the officers up in Cannon Beach and had a conversation with her. And they do utilize their CERT team for being posted up at beach accesses in the evening. And they also report things that they see back to the police department. They also have over two times the size of department that we have. So they have a lot more officers that are available to work and go after people on the beach. But it's definitely something that we can research more for next year and see if there's parts of that that we can utilize to help us fight the illegal fireworks next year.
Maybe Max actually might be the person to tell, talk about this, but can you talk about some of the pre-work that you guys did in terms of getting the postcards out to folks and short-term rentals, businesses? So Max went and hand-delivered those. And we had posters out this year and you changed the location of where some of the signs were.
And we had the reader board, one reader board sign down by the beach specifically saying illegal fireworks, 500 fine, with the other one up on Lanita. So we were hoping that having it down by the beach would be more visible to people around that area.
It was.
How many flyers did you have this year that you?
Oh, a whole bunch. Over 200, I would say, handed out.
To the short commercials?
Yep. And then leading up to the 4th, we put down signs at the end of the roads as well that are just a larger form of the flowers.
Those are steps that we hadn't taken in previous years.
Yeah, I think that was all really good. I wonder if counselors have any comments or questions based on their observations or?
Well, I thought it was excellent. I thought you guys did a great job. I think there were some fireworks on the 4th, but I mean, that's to be expected. The question I have is, we say no illegal fireworks. So does that mean legal fireworks are okay?
In the city limits, yes, they currently are.
So legal fireworks, you can?
Oregon legal fireworks can be set off in the city limits of Manzanita.
I did not, okay.
The beaches, the state park doesn't allow any fireworks on the beaches in Oregon. So even a sparkler technically would be illegal on the beach.
Okay.
But in the city limits, we would follow the state law, which is any that you can purchase in Oregon legally are.
Are those generally less powerful or less?
Usually don't fly up in the air or explode.
That's the distinction that's in the ordinance language, which is why it was good to have that on the posters
Yeah.
this year. And I think we have more education to do on that. So there was a good start this year and more to come, I think.
Yeah, because I did not know that. I thought all by.
You didn't read the poster?
I read the poster, but I thought, is this, is this? I just questioned the poster. I should never have questioned the poster.
In the past years, you know, driving around the towns, patrolling at night, there'll be families out setting fountains and different things off in the street and we always just stop and watch them and then move on by when they're done.
Yeah.
So that's never been an issue so far.
That makes very good sense.
Hey Chief, I was on a beach the next day, I guess, and I picked up a handful of, it was like hard plastic, it was gray, sort of military gray, hard plastic. Looked like it was, had been like a projectile that they would have used to set something off.
Can I just interrupt you because your mic's giving some feedback on that? Thanks.
You know, when I picked it up, it just looked like the after effects, like it would be shrapnel, you know. I don't know. There's always debris on a beach after 4th of July. I don't recall seeing the plastic stuff in the past. I don't know if that was something that you guys heard about or know anything about?
Yes, I think. I don't know if anything's exploded yet. Yeah. I mean, I know some of the, some of the illegal ones have, are like little boxes with a bunch of tubes that, you know, each thing shoots out of. If the ones, they used to be called Saturn missiles, they have like 50 little tiny projectiles that shoot up.
Are they hard plastic?
They, I think, would be. And I think the two, the box that they shoot out of is a plastic. Yeah. So it could be something like that, probably.
First, I just want to say, yay, Max!
Yeah.
Local product, no less. So it's really cool to see you coming up. And as he's been the enforcement officer driving around town, I mean, that is one smiling face. He's a great presence to represent the police department in this town. And I'm so happy to see you moving forward. I hope you won't engage in any of those hijinks that I see in those police academy movies. So that said, come back fully certified and we're looking forward to it. On the fireworks, from my house on Elm Street, I looked down the beach and it seemed like there was an absolutely wonderful fireworks display that was going on down in the state park. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to get them to enhance their enforcement during 4th of July. You know, of course, after the 4th of July, you see all the social media posts about one thing or another having to do with the fireworks. And one comment that I saw was about some jurisdiction that had gone to the extent in one year or another to hire out a security patrol private company to assist in that. And it seemed to have tamped down the use of fireworks in years going forward. Have we ever talked about doing something like that?
Well, we have not discussed that, but I don't believe that they would have any kind of a citation authority. They'd be, unless the sheriff could deputize somebody or something, but they wouldn't have any citation authority through us.
Okay. Just curious about that. And then as long as Dave here in the audience. So I came down here exactly at 7 o'clock in the morning to put out some chairs and there were a lot of chairs out already. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to, you know, make that fairer when you're telling people you can't set up until 7 o'clock and there's hardly any space to set up then.
I'll ask John, you worked the night before. Were chairs going up again the night before?
Not the night before.
No. I think.
That was a big deal.
Yeah, because I know in the years past, people have been pretty good compared to, before we made the ordinance.
Right.
It was like two, three, four days ahead of time, people started to do chairs. Now I think it's like as the sun starts to come up, people are starting to do it now. Yeah, without having someone specifically out there constantly patrolling in the morning. But I think we kind of solved our initial problem that we were having.
Okay. And then the other thing that I was reading about in social media was concerns about the amount of candy that's being distributed. And again, this is probably more of a Dave question than a police question, but some of the people were throwing the candy kind of hard. You know, I have a three-year-old granddaughter sitting there on the parade route and it's not like she got hurt, but I mean, some of these people were just throwing, pelting you with candy. So if we can.
That's definitely not an Eric question. Why don't we just give that informally to Dave and Brad when he gets back? They'll be doing a debrief on the parade. We can talk about that. That might be some coaching to give to the, give to the floats and just reminders about that next year.
Aaron and Brad and the parade committee can work on that with.
If that's our biggest problem?
Yeah.
Great. That'll be great. Anything else on that?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. So I spoke to a couple of mayors locally afterwards and before, because everybody's got this eye to fireworks now. And I think the thing that is that people are more unanimous about than maybe the joy or the not joy of setting off the fireworks is the fire risk. So I think, you know, we'll talk about this for next year and ongoing years. But I think one of the things that was more powerful to me anyway, this year was to watch not just our sign up and the sign on the beach, but as you're driving through the communities, especially if you're not familiar, you're new to 4th on the coast, there were several signs along the 101, which sort of just gives you the reminder of, oh, this isn't just one town doing this. And Cannon has their own way of doing it, which is to eliminate everything. Nothing is allowed in that town. Rockaway still has a very big occurrence of on the beach and in town of fireworks. And they're trying to get at that and try to see how some of that can be diminished. So I think, I think we have some definite opportunities for next year for improvement. There always are. And I think maybe considering more the safety aspect from a fire perspective is another element that we can communicate with people about. But I, we talked, you know, Layla and I talked after 4th last year. And I'm just, I'm appreciative of the work that was done to try some new things or maybe some things we hadn't done for a while. Because we were a little out of practice. We'd gone COVID, the COVID years without having the parade, without having events. And I think it's been a long enough time now that our old public display that we used to have, which was massive and a very different feel for the 4th. I think for a lot of people, the memory of that is now a memory. People know we're not going to go back to doing something like that again. So it's just as interesting to see it evolve. And I did speak to a couple of people who actually were very concerned and still very upset about the amount of activity that occurred, particularly on the 4th. And what I said to them, which is what I hope any counselor would be confident in saying is just we made progress this year and we'll make more progress next year and we'll just keep at it to find the right balance of what a celebration of the 4th looks like in our town. So I want to thank you and the officers. I know you talked earlier about covering shifts. Well, are, is it a cadet? Are you a cadet when you're at the academy? What's the term? Student?
I don't want to say anymore. Recruit?
Recruit. So while you're, while Max is out of town, the department covers and you all do that. Nobody really pays that much attention, I don't think, but we do. And we understand all the officers that are doing extra shifts. Many of you who don't get to spend time with your family that weekend and you just pull together and do that. So I think that is also very, very much appreciated, I know by Layla and staff, but also by the council and for many members of the public who do appreciate the work that goes in in a small town with a small force with a large celebration. So I want to thank you for that.
Okay.
Yeah. You have anything else on the 4th? Okay, here's to July 4, 2026.
6.
July 4, 2026.
A 250-year celebration.
Wow. Yes. So our committee has some interesting things to think about. Call out some names at this point. Brad would do this if he was here and he may have a few comments when he's back next month. But the committee members, the entirely volunteer committee group who worked on the parade pulling this together, Jim Gray, Dave Dillon, Wendy Mallow, Jody Lewis, Carolyn Greenwood, Laura Bailey, Erin Lasky. And then Brad this year was our point person from the council. Additional volunteers, Mary Moran, Jim Bombay, Sari Jo Tomlin, Jacque Hillsbury, Todd Flynn, Alyssa Lawrence or Lawrence, Lori Dillon, Ty Mallow and April Youngen. So I want to thank each and every one of them. If you know them as friends or neighbors, please share your thanks. And I'm sure there are people who were working CERT that day who are not on the list. So just anybody and everybody who participated in helping with traffic or any other safety related work that day. It's truly appreciated by the town. So thanks, everybody. Eric, is there anything else?
So.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much and congratulations again to Max. I want to applaud again, but I'll come back. And a few of the many supporters of Max around town, thank you very much for being here. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Okay, classic street connection update. We talked about this last month and Layla's got an update for us on some changes happening there. So Layla?
Thank you. Yeah, so I want to give an update and then I also have a request of the city council tonight too. So maybe just to give some folks, keep the timeline where we have come from and where we are and where we're headed. So we issued an initial RFP in May this year with proposals were due in June. We received four. And during that process, during the RFP process, prior to the receipt of the proposals, we actually issued a multiple addenda. One of them focusing on peeling out the retaining wall so that we can understand the cost of the retaining wall and the associated improvements relative to the rest of the project. And there were as, at least two agenda issued because of discrepancies that were noted in the RFP. And we had multiple submissions, as I've mentioned. Some of those discrepancies were noted when contractors submitted their requirements to us. So during the review process, and I mentioned this last month, we realized we couldn't treat the retaining wall as an alternate, which allows us to do a different sort of look at the project. And the discrepancies, in addition to the high costs of the proposals that we received, I made the decision to cancel the RFP and reject all proposals because our concern of that leading to a protest. And I consulted with the city attorney throughout this whole process and that was also their advice. So what we did was we took what we learned from that. This is the first time the city has done a process like this. And some of those discrepancies were, our RFP said one thing and the engineer's project manual said something slightly different. And so those things can be a challenge. And so we didn't catch those. So we went through and we really refined the RFP. And our goal is to make it squeaky clean and that's what we did. And we revised it to make sure that the retaining wall portion of that RFP was a clear alternate. And that we also specified in the RFP that we will be value engineering to meet our budget requirements. We also went through and separated out the retaining wall completely in the scoring mechanism. So it was evaluated separately from the actual base bid. And the base bid are the other elements that don't tie into that retaining wall section. And then we increased the scoring for the relevant experience portion as well as the approach and schedule, because those things started to become a lot more relevant to us. They were relevant to begin with, but so we reallocated some of the points. We also took the approach of requesting two bid schedules. So we had been really pushing hard to try to get this project done by November, largely due to the funding source that we had. And also because the water line needs to get in as soon as possible in order to support the affordable housing that's going in up behind Highlands. So what we did is we issued and requested two schedules for proposers to have. One that completes the entire project in November, one that would complete elements of the project in the spring. And the intent behind that was to get at some cost savings and to increase competition as well as giving us a little bit more time potentially to look at some of the complexities associated with the retaining wall with a qualified contractor on board. We believed that, you know, these were in the best interest of the city and it also provided the proposers with additional clarity in terms of the schedule and the expectations. So as a result, you know, another goal we had was increasing competition. We received six bids on this project. And so that was nice to see. Those bids are still above our base cost, but because we have put that language into the RFP that we can value engineer, we can issue an award for that. And so we did do that. We issued a notice of intent to award on June 23rd and then we received a protest to that award on June 30th. So a protest is kind of, if you're familiar with how land use works, there's an appeal process. And so a protest process is similar. It's, the rules for that are listed under Oregon Administrative Rules 1370490450. It allows any proposer who is adversely affected or aggrieved, they can file a protest in writing slightly factual and legal grounds. And so that occurs and the agency header designee must settle the issue or issue a written decision in response. And then what could happen after that, there's potential for judicial review. Protests do occur. And so it's not a super common thing, but it's not something that never happens. It does happen. And I don't want to get into the details of it, but we feel the RFP that we put out was very, I think, tightly done. So I have been working with our legal team to resolve this issue over the last several days. We have to respond pretty quickly to these things. And what's kind of come up is, you know, the Manzanita Charter. So Section 22 states that the city manager is the administrative head of the city government. The Public Contracting Code states that the head of the contracting agency or such persons designated may settle or resolve protests and issue written decisions on those protests. And so I think just in the spirit of sort of clarity and making sure that we're all on the same page, you know, we interpret and we being myself and the legal team, the head of the contracting agency is myself. But I, what I'm asking the city council to do is to affirm that the city manager is authorized to resolve protests and issue written decisions under OAR 1370490450. And so if someone would be willing to make that motion, and I'd be happy to take questions afterward, unless you have them.
Is council okay with making the motion about handling the protests and then doing Q and A about the, any other questions we have? You comfortable?
Sure.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'd be willing to make the motion to designate the city manager as the person who would be responsible for resolving the protest.
Do we need a second or do we wait?
Presume we need a second.
Okay, a second.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome. It's always good to clarify things because, you know, yeah, these kind of projects don't come along all that often. So we want to make sure everything is understood. So we want to make sure everything is understood. Okay. So do we have questions? Council have questions about the project. Jerry?
Yeah, just, uh, two quick ones. So, um, we have six bidders on the, the current RFP. Is that, um, two new ones or?
We got two new ones, yeah.
All four that applied first time?
Mm-hmm.
And is the protesting, uh, firm, were they in the original four?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Questions?
I don't have any, no.
Does the timing, um, for how long it takes to resolve the protest, does that, does that preclude us making any progress on the project itself? Do we have to put things on hold?
So if we don't resolve the protest and we issue a written decision, once that decision is issued, um, we are able to begin our negotiations. If the, uh, I don't know what you would call them. It's not a plaintiff, but if the, if the complainant basically files with the circuit court, it depends on what they file, if they file a restraining order on us to do that work. So there's a number of iterations that could occur, but if a, if a written decision is issued, once that is issued, then we can begin negotiations and we can move forward with the contract. Um, but there is some risk of a judicial review that would slow down the process. Yeah.
Okay. So based on what we know now, which is not perfect information, do you expect the timing of the next council meeting to prove the bid? Or will we need a special meeting in between, do you think? Or what's your instinct?
Um, so one of the rules that we have to follow is that as soon as a protest is filed, we cannot communicate or negotiate with the, uh, person we issued or the company we issued the notice of intent to award. That said, um, we intend to begin negotiations as soon as we are able to, and so we will expedite that. So I don't quite know what that looks like yet. Um, it's possible we would have a special meeting. It's possible that it would be next month. It's possible it could be not next month. So.
Okay. And do you want to speak just for those people not familiar with all the, the nuts and bolts of this? Do you want to go back and just reiterate what's going on with the state grant on this and the time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Timeline we thought we had and how that's changed?
Yeah, no, that's great. So that was one of the other things that sort of changed between RFP one and two is that the governor's budget was passed and includes rolling over our funds to next by NIM. And so that gives us a bit longer time to do the work. And so, uh, the state is, I was in touch with them today, is, uh, working on an amendment to our contract, and so we should receive that, I think, in probably the next couple of weeks. And that will have an extension to our ability to spend those funds. It's tied to the by NIM, and so that's why we were sort of urgently trying to commit the funds before the end of the fiscal year. And, uh, we knew by the time we issued that RFP that that money was going to be carried over. It just hadn't been signed yet, and it is now.
Not to be taken for granted.
You never take it for granted, no, especially when you're committing, um, to a large project. So, so now we know, and those, uh, once that amendment is, um, once I sign that amendment, then we're off and running as far as that goes. Yeah.
So Leila, you're going to, in terms of going forward with the contract, assuming that we will be doing that, uh, you talk about value engineering. So what, what are you value engineering? And what percentage chance do you think we'll be able to get a full, beautiful, everything we wanted?
Everything we wanted. Well, the goal is to give you everything you want all the time. So, um, I think that the way we've now structured how we intend to move forward, the probability of achieving that is higher. Um, because one of the things I always like to talk about, like when I learn something. So I learned that you can actually do a CMGC model, which is what we did with City Hall. I didn't know that, and I'm okay to admit my ignorance around that, um, because it's not often done. Even what we did this time is not often done. And the benefit of that, which I think was evident on City Hall, is when you have a contractor at the table with your designer, you end up with something that is constructible. Um, and with our bid for City Hall, we stayed within the costs. In fact, we were able to add things back in, and that, I think, was in large part due to having the contractor participating in the design. So we will have the ability to work with our selected contractor, whoever that ends up being, but we will have that ability to work with them and our engineer to solve that. I don't know what those options are. We're, we're flying through quite a few. Um, but you know, the ultimate sort of high level goals of this are like, get the water line in, right? First and foremost, um, address the stormwater issues and build a path.
Yeah.
And so in calm that street down. And I feel strongly that we will be able to achieve that. But what it exactly looks like, I don't quite know yet, but we have been, we as staff have already been talking about potential options that if we can't figure out a way to construct the retaining wall, um, that there are some other potential options that we, we think we can explore that would achieve all of those goals. So that's my, my goal.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else, council?
Yeah, I've got a question. So, um, as it stands, absent the protest, uh, we weren't likely to break ground on this project until next summer. Is that fair to say?
Well, no, we need to get the water line in now. So I think the retaining wall portion, um, not until next spring. One of the main drivers, too, of the schedule is that we have a paving window, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done underground and reinforcing that roadbed. And it just started stacking up to where it was unlikely that we could do that repaving this year. And so in terms of its impact on the community, um, we made the decision that it's better to construct everything we can now and then do the portion that affects the paving, um, next year, so that we don't have to close the road for nine months when there's not going to be very much activity. Um, so that was, that's, that's the thinking. And our goal is to still get this thing done by next spring. So by next summer, it's, you know, this time next year, we're finished.
Okay.
But the water line will go in first.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Good questions. Thank you. Thank you, Leila.
Thanks.
Um, okay, we'll move on to new business. So we've got a couple of map related zoning map amendments. And because that's not something we are doing on a frequent basis in here, and I'm sure you're ready to do that, Leila, if you could talk a little bit about, um, well, maybe together, like what we're doing in broadly, and then the specifics, and why we've got one that's quite a bit older than the other. And yeah, so if you can take us through that, and then we'll, we'll tackle them one at a time.
Happy to. So these, um, our zoning ordinance requires when a planned unit development is approved, that our zoning map is updated to indicate that there's a PD there. And so.
What there, sorry?
PD, a plan development.
And development.
Okay. So in order to do that, what we want from the developer is their final site plans to ensure it aligns with the planning commission, or in this case, in both cases, the city council's final order, to ensure it's compliant with that. And then this is simply an administrative move. So you guys have actually already reviewed and approved the plans by having held hearings, having approved the projects in both cases. Um, so this applies to the Manzanita Lofts. It's taken, uh, a bit longer to get that information from them. They had to do some, if you recall, they, they reduced the number of units that were on that site, which resulted in a change in the site plan, but it's not a substantive change. It just shrunk the site plan, um, which was within the guidelines that came through the final order. So we believe it's compliant. And then Manzanita Pines moved a lot faster. They already had their site plans done. They were ready to go. And so, um, what these two ordinances are asking is to, um, have you, and we have to do this by ordinance, because any amendments to the zoning map have to be done via ordinance. Um, but what we're asking for is to, um, get your approval on both Manzanita Lofts and Manzanita Pines to make a map amendment to allow that PD overlay. So it's just updating the map. It will still have the same underlying zoning, but it will say PD on top. Um, just some logistics, we have to make notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development thirty-five days in advance of the hearing. They review this. So that was done in both cases. Um, so I'm requesting tonight that you conduct a first reading on both of these ordinances. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions relating, Jerry?
Uh, yeah, this is just a curiosity. So plan developments, uh, in the last couple of years, it's been pretty, pretty popular.
We're going to see another one soon.
Exactly. Uh, but I'm curious, and across the whole city now at this point, uh, other areas. Uh, Manzanita Pines, Manzanita Lofts, the cottages and the cottages to be. Are there other?
Not that I'm aware of. And one of the things we'll be doing with this comp plan and the zoning updates is just making sure we caught all that. And the municipal code word will help us identify that. So if you saw any ordinances, make sure to capture it. Let me know.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Would you like to start with the Manzanita Lofts?
I would.
Great.
And I would like to recommend an ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five dash three and ordinance ninety-five dash four by adopting a planned development overlay zone for residential planned development, Manzanita Lofts.
A second there.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? I opposed. Okay, passes. Um, who would like to take the lead on the Manzanita Pines?
I'll do that.
Yeah.
I'd like to make an ordinance.
Okay, go for it.
An ordinance amending, uh, ordinance ninety-five dash three and ordinance ninety-five dash four by adopting a planned development overlay zone for residential planned development, Manzanita Pines.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? I opposed. Okay, that carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for the explanation and the reminder. Okay, so now we've got, next up is Amendment to Resolution twenty-four eleven. This is a little bit of a housekeeping item, Leila, so you want to take us through that, and we'll take care of that?
You, um, so I wanted to thank Nina, um, Chris from my office, who found this as she was preparing for the audit. So we had a Stridner's error in last fiscal year's budget. We transposed, um, the Parks Department and Municipal Court Department members on the resolution. The resolution is what the auditor and everyone else uses to hold us to account to our spending. Uh, all the budget books, what was approved, everything that went on the LB one and submitted to the state was correct. Um, but when we discovered this, we consulted with the city attorney, and indeed, Oregon Budget Manual does provide for things that are Stridner's errors. So there are things that are, you know, we're not changing the amount that was appropriated. We're not changing anything that's substantive, because everything else was correct. So other than us feeling a little embarrassed by it, um, there's, there's not much to be said about that. So, um, so what we're asking is just you approve this resolution that would amend the, uh, original resolution, and that helps kind of clean things up for us as we go into audit.
Thank you. Or do we have any questions, comments, or council? Okay, someone help me with motion on this one, please?
I'd move that we adopt a resolution of the city council and the city of Manzanita, Oregon, amending Resolution twenty-four dash eleven, adopting the budget, levying taxes, categorizing taxes, and making appropriations for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five.
Have a second? Linda, a second? In favor? I opposed. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, so another interesting item that's come up concerning the possibility of having an off-leash area at Underhill Plaza. Since we have so few dog owners in town and so few visitors with dogs, this probably won't be relevant to too many people.
Our staff with dogs.
Wink, wink. Yeah. So, um, so Leila, take us through the, the background of what you heard about this, and we can have some discussion tonight about it and give you some direction then about how to proceed.
That'd be great. Thank you. Um, it's actually more of what I've seen. So since we've moved, uh, to our new space, we're right next to Underhill Plaza, and every day I see multiple people out there willfully breaking the law. And, um, it's actually been very contained, um, positive. You know, what I've witnessed has been reasonable. Um, and so just talking with, uh, police staff, who would be people writing citations for these sorts of things, the facts that we're sitting right there. Um, and we have, and I asked the chief this today if he remembers getting any other complaints, but we did get one complaint last year from someone, and so I think Officer Mooney went down and spoke with them, and they leash their dog and left. So it's, it's just a thought that I, I've had a chance to talk with PD. I've also talked to Public Works, um, who would maintain a dog do station there. Um, so we actually put that up, a second one. There was already one there. And, um, I wanted to get council's input and feedback to see whether you would be supportive of that and see if you wanted to, um, engage further, because it would, it would require just a surgical amendment to our, I think it's our nuisance ordinance. Is that right? Yeah. Um, so just to say that, you know, unless allowed, and then we would sign it. Um, and the things that we would make sure is, you know, to put on that sign is that people have to have their dogs under voice command control, have a leash nearby, they have to pick up their dog do. Um, the dogs have to be vaccinated and registered. Um, I copied these from the state, because they have that, too. So we would have signage up there that would require that. I've also reached out to CIS, our insurance carrier, too, to see if there was potential for liability, and got some good feedback from her. I think because we are dog poop experts here, um, that's, it's not such a concern for us, because it's, you know, in talking to Rick, it's just, it's part of what we do. It's a service that we provide this community. And so I think and expect that the people who are utilizing this space will continue to be respectful and pick up their dog do. Um, you know, the market's on there. We don't typically see or have heard any complaints about excess feces anywhere. So that gives me hope and confidence that it will be treated respectfully. So I just feel like it would be a nice thing to do, but I also, you know, wanted to throw the idea out there, see what you all thought, and whether or not we should put any effort into making that amendment.
So comments, thoughts?
Well, I think it's a great idea. I really like it a lot. And I live near there, so I walk by there a lot. And there are always dogs there. Always. And I will tell you, just speaking as an old person, uh, there have been periods of time where there's been a lot of dog do left there.
Oh.
And that's changed. I mean, people have really become, I mean, I don't, it's just, I think people have become more aware that it's, I think, having the farmer's market there, I think people are cognizant of that. So I, I just, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's, it's very Manzanita. I mean, it's, it's who we are. I would strongly support it.
Any thoughts coming?
Glory, hallelujah to Mary Brophy.
You want to explain that?
She wears the moniker of being the dog poop counselor.
Oh, dog poop lady.
Dog poop lady. She, she, she was the person that inspired having the, the waste stations throughout the city.
And Jerry Taylor never forgave her for that.
And I inherited that shit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and there's great history of dogs being out at Underhill Plaza. You know, the Howells used to occupy space.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
At Underhill Plaza, and they have their two dogs in the office all the time. It's a part of their advertising campaign, and, um, Hillary never put a leash on those dogs when she sent them out the back door.
Um, we're not issuing citations for past behavior either.
No, no, I think, I think they're safe.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I still know people that go down there with their dogs, and they're big dogs even. Um, and no problems are caused by those dogs. Um, so, you know, it, oh, I, I hate hypocrisy, and to think that I would have to have my police force turning a blind eye to dogs right there at the police station, um, defies logic. So, you know, let's, you know, make it legal and under the appropriate circumstances, and I'm all for it.
Okay, Jerry, anything?
Yeah, no, I, like Linda, I walk by there a lot. I see the dogs a lot. I don't see any real problem with it. I do think that, um, we may create an expectation that there'll always be a leash-free, uh, park in town with this, and we don't really know yet what's going to happen. in town with this, and we don't really know yet what's gonna happen with that.
Yeah.
It's property. So we just gotta keep that in mind, but certainly, under the current circumstances, entirely in favor. And then, the only thing I wonder a little bit about is, yeah, the owner's gotta have the dog under waste control, et cetera, et cetera. But there is gonna be more activity with City Hall there, just more cars in and out, and a little more activity with the, maybe with the newer restaurant up in the corner. And so, is there, we're not gonna have the fence sit in necessarily, but-
No. One thing that, actually, Public Works completed today at my request is that we're no longer going to, we don't love it anyway, but having people drive up onto the backside of Underhill. So we've now gated that off, and the market will be able to access that. And that's in large part due to safety.
Yeah.
Because if you have cars conflicting, animals running around, you just never know. So the other thing, too, is in the wintertime, you know, I've seen people just drive their car up onto Underhill Plaza. The market does it. It's okay. But in the wintertime, it can get kind of soupy in there, and, you know, we don't want to have the landscape, even though it's not gorgeous, but we don't want to see it ripped up. So I'm hoping that that will help mitigate any of that kind of issue. That's part of the deal, is you have to have your dog under waste control. And I think that that delineation between the City Hall parking lot, which is a little bit more elevated backside, should help. And we'll, we'll observe. Like, we'll be right there.
Yeah.
So if we do notice there's issues or problems, then we can have another conversation.
I think we've got a unanimous. Sorry? I think we've got a unanimous.
Are you taking any public comment?
We can, certainly. Would you like to step up to the mic, please?
Lawbreaker right there.
Yeah.
And identify yourself, and your dog's name, too.
Joe Newhouse. My dog's name is Arrow, and we have used that area in the past. However, just, I'd suggest you consider some unintended consequences. And that is, if it becomes the established area or a approved area to take your dog, and if City Hall is there, so people are beginning, becoming more, and the restaurants, it's, the use is going to increase fairly exponentially. And I worry that, I haven't gone to other dog parks, dogs pee. You can't clean that up. And over time, the, the sawdust in the area becomes smelly. It smells like a dog park. That's, having dogs all my life, that's what happens in dog parks. It does start to have an odor to dog. So I'm just wondering if there's any way it could be in an enclosed, somehow an enclosed area of that Underhill, just to prevent that from the kids that like to play in the picnic area during the farmer's market. So, that's all.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Can you take that into account when you come back with a proposal? I think I'm more, I would be more inclined to say, let's try it. We don't know, we don't know what exponential's gonna look like there. We don't know what traffic's gonna look like. Let's, let's go with it and start. We can always pull back if it doesn't work. And if it's something that becomes a problem, we can change it. So let's, let's start it.
I'm not suggesting we don't advertise it. It's just the sort of blatant, like I think is-
No, but I, but I do think if we're gonna do it, it's, I mean, we don't, we don't need to have it on the reader boards all around town, but people should know, because I think another element of people with dogs here is, people, some people like to run them on the beach. You're, you're supposed to have a leash on at all times. People routinely do not do that there either. And I think people might welcome a space who haven't discovered that particular spot yet, to say, that's a place I can work with my dog, coach my dog, be around, socialize with other dogs, and not have it be on the beach, which can be problematic sometimes for people. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
And we'll learn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, we'll work on it and get back.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll come to council updates. Brett? Brad? Jerry? Jerry, Brad? Jerry, yeah, go ahead, please. Yeah.
I don't know that I have any council updates. It's been a, it's been a fun month. We did do a conversation with counselors, you and I, at the library. It was a small group, but a spirited group. And I understand that we're kicking that up again and doing it sometime in July. And right around that same time, I think the state completed its work on the vehicles on the beach change, and the county signed off on that. So that is gonna be in place by October 1st. And I guess that'll require some new signage. I'm not sure who would start that, or whose responsibility it is, but-
Take care of it.
Okay, good. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you. Linda?
So we are continuing the coffee or communication with the city. It's going to be at the library the fourth Friday of every month. This time is on the 25th at the library, from 10:30 to 12:30. Occasionally, we will have a focus discussion, and this, this time it's going to be on middle So we encourage, we encourage you to come. It's a good time to ask questions. No decisions are made, and the intricate detail may be more difficult, but the, the feelings of what's, what's happening, what the strategy is, how we're going about it, how we're getting public input on it, I think are all things that would be really important to discuss during that period of time. So we look forward to that. It will be on the, Friday, the 25th, at the library, Manzanita Library. So everybody come. That's it.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, speaking of middle housing, I mean, we've all been really breaking through these statutes and different kinds of things, trying to learn this and bring ourselves up to speed. And I have read so much now that my eyes are falling out. So when I had my chance to visit with Leila yesterday, you know, she's saying, God, you know, what a great group, because you're so diligent. We're all really working hard to craft something that makes sense for this city. And I love the fact that we're doing something for our city that's not the same as everything else in the county. And I just think that that's wonderful, good, hard work that we're doing. The other thing that we all did in the past month was have an opportunity to have a tour of the new City Hall. And that was a wonderful experience. And I can't wait to welcome everybody into the new City Hall when it opens up. So it's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful facility, and it's gonna serve the city well for many years to come. So when we get to that point, you know, it's gonna be a, hats off to our city manager for having accomplished this project, and, and all the city councils before us, mayors before us, that worked so diligently to see this thing come to fruition. And, and so I'm anxious to see the celebration take place on August 2nd. The other thing that I've been involved with that hasn't had, you know, it's not me as a part of the city, it's me as, as a citizen, is I was just really taken aback when there was an ICE enforcement action in this city. And so, I've been going up to the highway, and I've been voicing my opinion up there about what I've been seeing the federal administration doing. And I haven't been alone amongst my counselors. And I really admire those of us who have gone up there to, you know, take our stands. One thing that happened when the No Kings Rally took place was, instead of just staying up at the top of the highway, the protesters decided to take the protest and march down the sidewalks of Lenita. And congratulations to the protesters, because it was a very peaceful protest. And the only thing that I saw that I found was troubling was, one of the protesters decided to confront our police officer that was on duty. And that person needed to be reminded that our police force did what they were responsible to do with respect to that ICE enforcement action, and not place other people in danger, and not cause a situation that would have caused an escalation. And the officer that was on duty handled that person very well. They were very confrontational, and even a little derogatory. And so, my hats off to our police force for handling things the way that they were supposed to, and I'm really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I just have two things. One is, there are a lot of things in the job up here that are interesting and enjoyable, and some things are just need to be done, and they're, they're good to do. You don't get as much joy sometimes, but it's okay. It's part of the work. I found the conversation that we had with several citizens up at the library last month to be really stimulating and really helpful. It was a group of people who had questions, they had comments, they had critical comments to make, and people really listened. And people, people just, it was just a great, it is actually what you want that to be, a great conversation with people. We're not looking for just a, what do they call it now? The echo chamber of everybody who agrees with this, the most productive discussion. And for me, the most valuable are the ones where people bring a different viewpoint. So I was, I was, I was walking on air out of the library, and really happy for everybody who showed up, and just would encourage anyone who's thinking about that, or maybe hasn't done it before, to come on up to the library. We cannot offer you coffee. Coffee with counselors is a misnomer now, but-
It's a conversation with the city.
Thank you. I'm always a little slow in that. And the last thing I'd like to do in this room, here at the Pine Grove, which has seen so many things over the years, times of joy, times of sorrow, times of great celebration, times of learning, times of becoming, oh my goodness, aware of what tsunami awareness looks like in this town. I, I can't, it's, it's one of those classic, if these walls could talk kind of situations. There's just been so much of the community in and out of this building. And the, the Pine Grove took us in when we didn't have a place to meet, and has been just there for us every month. And this is our last meeting here. And I will be, I already have started, but I will personally be thanking the president and the board and the volunteers of the Pine Grove, because without all of that work that they have done for many years, we would not have had this place to call a temporary home. And much as challenging as it is technically to set up fresh every single month, we have really, really appreciated being here. So I wanna, I guess, close with a thank you to the Pine Grove, which is a great example of Manzanita community. So thank you. And on that note, I would like to close this meeting at 7:05. Thanks very much, everybody.
Hey.
Don't be used. Yeah.
Before we all go away, can I get somebody to come up here and take a picture of the group of us seated here for the last time?
Oh.
Sure. Mr. D, are you sure? No. That is already getting up when you look at it.
That's a great idea.